...by Bishop Slater, who's the bishop of Telia Church Ministries as well as a downtown merchant. So you have a double welcome here tonight, sir. If you will come on up. If everyone would please stand. Follow that, we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance.
Shall we pray? Father, we thank you for this opportunity, for gathering, to make decisions, to make plans. Father, we ask you, Lord, our elected officials, Lord, that you give them the patience, the kindness, the desire to begin to move forward and break, make this city greater than it is now. Father, we thank you, Lord, for what shall be accomplished today. You judge it, Lord. Keep our mind stayed on you, that we do the right things at the right time in the right season. Father, we thank you in advance for what you're getting ready to do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Bishop Slater.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the road for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, ma'am, we have roll call, please.
Here.
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 We're all here. Next, we have public hearings. There are no public hearings. Next, we have the public comment time. Anyone from the audience can speak for three minutes. First, I want to recognize Mr. George Williams to speak here, speak about the law enforcement appreciation dinner coming up. Come on up, Ms. George.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mr. Stevens, City Manager. Last year, we had a dinner for all of our law enforcement. We fed approximately 135 city officers, county deputies, sheriffs, security police from hospitals, colleges, mayors from all over the county, represented us from all over the county. Had a wonderful time. Some of the state legislators were here, John Bell and other ones. So we just had a great time. And I told you this was going to just be one year, but it'd be a normal year after year thing. Well, we're ready for another one. The 9th of November, and I want you to mark it on your calendar if you will. We're gonna have it out at the event center, and we'll have barbecue and chicken and all them trimmings that go with it. And I don't need any money. We had money left from last year. Plus, on the fat, on the other lap, we gave away $800 last year when we got through having the dinner. Two hundred to four different organizations, one Crime Stoppers, Red Cross, and Cures for Colors. We had a great time. And we have enough money left for this year. But on the better hand, I got a phone call last Thursday, and a gentleman businessman here in this town said, "Mr. George, I know you have cancer." And me and a group of five friends, that's friends of mine, they want to take over this. I said, "No, I can't let you do that." He said, "Okay, will you let us pay for everything?" I said, "I'll do that." So they gonna pay for all the bills. We'll leave the money we got in the bank for next year. And hopefully, I can live long enough to be here next year. But if I don't, I got just as good a chance as you guys did. In fact, let me tell you, I want to share one thing with you before I leave. A pastor said a few weeks ago, and he can tease with me all the time. He said, "George said, uh, he's bald headed now." I said, "Yeah, that's right." I said, "But, you know, I look around the audience, and I see some that's 45, 50 years old. They're bald headed, and they ain't got no excuse." I got an excuse for mine. But let me tell you this. I'm grateful I don't have to have any more treatments and go back in Thanksgiving, the 1st of December, and get another CAT scan. What I had last week was outstanding, Doc. CAT party said, "Just keep doing the things you want to do." I said, "Well, I love to play golf out there with Scott and the rest of the boys. Any of you wants to play, let me know." I want to share one thing before I leave. I saw on the TV, I know you, there's a traveler where you see on Channel 5. Last week, I sat at my daughter's house, and I saw where it was the Carolina traveler was at, Clinton, Kahari Golf Course. And yet, some of you might have seen this. This gentleman was 100 years old, and he'd been playing golf at the same golf course for 70 years. And he shoots in the high 70s, Scott, now at 100. You know what his name was? George Williams. You know what? I looked at his golf cart, and he had Carolina blue on his, his covers for his golf clubs. And he's an old Navy man. That's me. I'm gonna call that man, go down to Clinton. I'm gonna play one round with him. I hope I do. And thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody have any questions? We're gonna have it down at the event center, and it'll be probably from 4:30 until 7 o'clock on November the 9th, two week, the 2nd Thursday in November. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. George. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, my friend.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, my friend.
See you again.
I'll be good.
Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing.
I'll look to see you on the night.
Night.
We'll post you next.
Yes, sir. All right. Would anybody else in the audience like to speak? On anything? Anybody else want to speak? You have three minutes. Come on, young lady.
So call me a young lady.
Well, I'm gonna call you something else if you don't come on.
Go ahead, I dare you.
You said, "Don't or do?"
You won't.
You don't think I will?
Go ahead, if I dare you. I dare you.
The clerk would make me leave.
You?
But I will tell y'all, I will tell y'all a story about Ms. Williams. The manager and I were walking down the city, the street the other day. We ran into Ms. Williams. And it's, "Hello, Ms. Williams. How are you today?" Manager, me. I looked at her and said something else. Manager said, "I hope you're having a good day, Ms. Williams." And she looked at him and said, "Don't call me Ms. Williams. Call me my name." And I said, "Well," he said, "Well, what's your name?" She said, "My name's Queen Bitch." And that's what I want to be called. And she didn't think I'd tell y'all what she told us to call her.
Well, you did.
But poor Scott turned red and said, "Ma'am, I can't call you that in public or private." But I can, Ms. Williams.
I'm sure you've called people worship in that. I can tell by looking at you, baloney.
All right, your three minutes of story. So what you want?
All right. As far as that artwork goes down at the center, at the end of Center Street, down there?
The penis one?
Yes.
Okay, got you.
And I started to ask y'all if you were jealous of it whenever I was here last night. Anyhow, I have an idea or something to go down there.
Okay.
And I'm dead serious on this. I have Cherokee, Lundy, Black, and Irish blood in me. And I'm proud of every one of them. I think you should put something up regarding the Native Americans that were run out of North Carolina, or regarding the Native Americans that stayed behind and married slaves so they could stay here. And I'm telling you one thing right now, every last one of you, I'm proud of every drop of blood I got in me. I'm not normal. I never have been. And I hope I die one of the most abnormal people anybody has ever seen.
You're off to a good start.
I don't know how to take that.
That was a compliment, I promise.
But look, I'm telling you right now, I'm gonna hold you to what you said the last time I was here. When Mr. Antonio gets that shovel, you're gonna buy me some ice cream.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're gonna get him to take it to me.
I'm hoping he'll give it to us for free. But whatever we gotta do.
Whatever you got to do. Take that raise you got and pay for it.
Ah, there you go. Yes, ma'am.
All right, now I'm going.
But let me, let me tell you one thing about your comment, just because I think I know, I want to tell you what I think I know, okay?
Okay.
And that is, that artwork is, that we have is gonna leave pretty soon.
Good.
And there's been a group that's already picked out new artwork to replace it. And Julie, the timetables?
I mean, October 13th.
So on October 13th, that, your stuff that you don't like is leaving, and something else has already been picked to come back there. And hopefully, you'll like it better.
As long as it don't look like that.
Okay.
But, um, try to find something relating to Native Americans and slaves. They deserve recognition. Hey, and don't forget that. Don't be like that down when you're going in.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. You have a great.
And I will see you tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning. Yes, ma'am. I'm looking forward to it.
Y'all have a good evening.
You, too.
And notice I'm not bitching at you tonight, and I'm all such standing.
Where's your scooter tonight? I kinda miss it. I like to see you kinda drive.
Want me to run this thing again?
I kinda like you kinda wrecked the buildings and.
Well, let me tell you. And I go into this further tomorrow. But I thought about it after I got back out on the street. And I started to come back up here and go by Chief West again and do this to us. It's nothing ugly. Sign language.
Okay.
And I'll tell you what that means tomorrow.
Tomorrow, I hope.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You have a good night.
I am. Now, I'm going home, so I don't get run over.
Okay. You be careful crossing the street now.
I got my cane with me. I smacked it. Oh, one more question. Is it legal for people to carry stone guns here, as long as they're holstered?
I don't know. Don't get me lying to you. I can find out, and I'll try to know by tomorrow morning. How about that?
All right, because I had one police officer tell me I could.
You could or could not?
He could, that I could.
Okay.
As long as it was holstered where somebody could see.
Okay. Well, we'll try to find out for sure.
Okay.
I hate to give you bad information. You don't plan on using it on me, do you? I don't think I'd like that.
No, I'd rather you could not, you're a drawer, say, use a stone gun.
All right. You have a great night.
I am.
Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
How are you?
We know you.
We open a new store after we demolished Brookside. Everything peaceful. You know, the stores, hours, I'm coming for a store hour. You know, we shut down earlier until nine. And you know, we have a lot, most of the people coming to Blue Harbor from nine to 11:00. And we don't make no money. Second thing, everybody, if he work after nine, and most of the people coming, shabby, snack, whatever, from nine and up. What we request, not a lot. We sell food, no beer, no nothing. And if you could call the police department to, we never have any problem, any call, any hang around. And you see that. You come to the store, you visit, and you see what. We don't ask a lot. We just, at least to cover our bills. That's what we ask for. And I have a lot of people from the neighborhood that's heard because I close early. They say, "Why you close early? You open more." But, you know, you can do something, and your hand is tied.
Right.
But this is what we request now, to until we see what we could do, and continue. That's my request.
Okay.
That's all. And I hope be okay. And I have a lot of people from the neighborhood, if you wanna ask them, how is that?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sam.
You will.
You'll get your answers shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Sam.
And I hope everything.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is James Gaines.
How are you tonight, Ms. James?
For me to be here. I don't like talking in front of people, but I'm standing in behalf of Sam that just stood up here.
Yes, ma'am.
And I can ask the question, how many of y'all are business people? Have a business of your own? How, I, I, quite a few, you're right. How many like to be told when they can close their store? Nobody. And y'all know I'm telling the truth. I visit H&amp;H, D&amp;H, Comco, Kaiser, Adams, Madison, Donnell, B-Town, known as Manhattan. And some of them stores, you got B-Town and Manhattan, them store owners had trouble at their store killing, whatever, shooting. And I don't understand it. And I went there visiting, asked them one question, "Do they have to close at 9:00 o'clock?" They told me, "No. Nobody, no problem, no problem. We have no problem. Nobody ever told us this." But Mr. Sam had been told he had to close at 9:00 o'clock. That, according to whom, the owners that I had talked to, that's got to be harassment, got to be something personal there, or something going on. And then they were something, he was, two people, some people were something to his store to take pictures of some machines that they said was illegal. Get fat straight. Those machines are not illegal yet. Raleigh taking care of that. And when they go to court and get their answer, and then, as a matter of fact, they're not the machines that people saying that they have. I don't, but they need to go visit some of them other stores, 'cause when I would visit some of the stores, I might, there might be the, and the number. But Mr. Sam got two surplus machines in his store. Two surplus and one fish machine. And the people, okay, you got Lighthouse, and B-Town, and AK Grill, they had their machines long before Sam got his machines. And, but nobody ain't harassing them. It's Sam. Sam. So that make me thank his person. This man is working for a living, y'all. This is his livelihood. This man been through something. He lost his brother. Tell you the truth, I don't, I even went to Pigley Wiggit, asked the owner, talked to the owner there. Even IGA, where they start a grocery store in that area. They said, "No. No." That they got that reason, I get too. I just wanted to know where they start a grocery store. But this man got some, I mean, it got to be good or better, but y'all look, my time running out. But there's no reason why this man cannot open his store at 11:00 o'clock. There's no reason, no reason at all. I don't care what nobody say. It's harassment. And number two, you cannot send somebody in no store to take no picture. It is according to the North Carolina General Assembly, House Bill 405, it's against the law. So y'all need to get your, get them laws and read them before y'all send somebody in there talking illegal machines. He did not have illegal machines in there. He got two surplus and a fish. Let the man open the store. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James. Have a good night.
Ms. James, don't leave yet. Ms. James, don't leave yet. Pertaining to like, other businesses that have had murders and have had violence, we are definitely noticing them, and we definitely are addressing those issues. You know, so I just wanted to clarify that with you.
But their store ain't been closed, they ain't closed at 9:00 o'clock.
And I don't know anything about anybody going into a business, taking pictures or anything like.
Oh, yeah, they did it. Uh-huh. But anyway, it's harassment against the law. The man just asked them to let his store stay open. Y'all that got business know what this man going through. That's his livelihood. Y'all don't know his whole story. I mean, he trying. Nobody went there and helped him. I do go down there and try to support him and give him some ideas. I see a great difference from Bob's, too, than I do when he was at Brookside. It's not fair. It's not right. And nobody else having that trouble but Sam. So there's a problem somewhere. I mean, people need to open up their heart. And nobody perfect. Everybody got, I mean, dog, Lord, I thank you. I don't want to go that route.
Thank you, Ms. James. You have a good night.
Have a good night.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir.
I'm Percy Royal. I have been downtown for so many years. And I'm concerned about this Center Street parking.
Okay.
I've been downtown for, ever since the 11th month, 12th day of 1985. And I feel like I don't want the parking. I don't want parking meters because I have customers. I come to work early in the morning, 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, so I don't have a problem working with my customers. But my customers, sometime they stay longer than two hours. And the majority of them stay, sometime it's three hours. And I can't get to them if they got to go and move vehicles and come back in. And I feel for the senior people at the, a place down here on the corner.
Right. The Wayne'sboro House.
Right. I feel for that, too. But I don't agree with the parking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And I will say, if anybody spends any time downtown, it's you. Because I see you there all the time.
All the time.
All the time. Thank you for what you do. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm here speaking on behalf of Sam about the store. And I just feel I agree with everybody else in the neighborhood, around the neighborhood. We need that store. A lot of us out there don't have transportation. There's no stores in sight. A lot of us don't go, like, going to the other stores. And it's right there in the neighborhood. A lot of times, we can get everything right where we need it, right there at that store. I grew up with Sam, his brother. A lot of us, his customers, have personal relationships with him. So it's easy to say, "Oh, well, we want this store shut down," when you're not in that environment, or you don't have to live where we live. But do behalf on everybody out there in the neighborhood, we would appreciate if we could keep our store open. And you said something about the murders and everything like that, but that doesn't go down at his store and what's being done about it. In conclusion, I would just like to say, we need the store. Those of us in the neighborhood, it's not a want, it's not a desire, it's a necessity when we have children and babies that need formula 9:00 at night and things of that nature.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
How are you tonight?
I'm all right. Good evening. My first time ever attending a meeting like this.
You got three minutes. Say anything you want to.
But this is about Sam's store.
Okay.
I think it need to be stay open late because he's the only, I don't go to the other stores, 'cause I don't feel safe. He's the only store I feel safe going to. And when me and my family don't have anything, he looks out for us. So I think he deserve to stay open later.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on anything? Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is April Melrose. I have the Peach Boutique on Center Street. I have 106 and 108 South Center, which is right next to the Wayne'sboro House. So I wanted to give you guys what I see and what the merchants do see with this parking. So every day when we come in, there, yes, the elderly lives next door. A lot of them do park on Center Street. The well-enabled park on Center Street. They do have the parking behind the lot that Mr. Will and Leslie would prefer them to park into, and they have repeatedly asked them to. My concern is they're there all day. And we had a car there that was parked over a week in the same spot, which is a prime parking to mine and another store right beside me. They did get a warning after it was called to the police to please move your car. So they did move their car. I've seen a car pull a cone out of the back of their car, put it in their spot on Center Street, drive off, so they can park back on Center Street when they come back. And that's just what we see. There's an average eight to 12, not only residents, but employees, parked on Center Street on the south side. It's not even the north side. This is just on the south side, eight to 12 every day. If we have a two-hour parking, let's just say we rotate. We've got an extra hour in the day where somebody stays over two hours because they have a service, they're shopping, they're dining, they're spending time. That's 24 to 60 cars that could have flipped, customers that could have come into our store. When a lot of times, they just drop by, I've had customers call and say, "I'm sorry, I tried to come see you, but there was no parking." I know there's parking. There's plenty of parking downtown, but it's the convenience. Customers, we live in the convenience world. If it's not instant gratitude, they're not happy. That's my concern. Are we at the point Raleigh's at? No. But I do think now is the time to go ahead and get ahead of this problem before it gets even worse, before we're having to go back and try to get these people back downtown again, before we lose them. And I'm not asking to have somebody out there at two hours and give a ticket. If I go park somewhere that has a two-hour parking, I keep an eye on how long I'm there. I'm not saying that everybody should just get a ticket immediately. And I know there are services that do take longer downtown. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak?
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, ma'am.
Councilmembers, my name is Kathy Quinellison. I own Carolina Pine Country Store on Center Street. My mentor in the Air Force taught me that the best decisions and opinions are made once you have all the facts. I don't envy you on your positions. I know you deal with a lot of topics. And parking, obviously, is one that carries a broad spectrum of opinions and decisions. And in all honesty, you know, being a retail owner, you would think that myself, you know, being a merchant, that I am over here on, you know, being very pro two-hour parking, but that is not the case. I have very much so taken a lot of time, you know, listening, gathering my facts, listening to the opinions of others on this situation. And I don't envy you at all, you know, having to make a decision on this topic. I listen to, you know, some of the situations that some of these other business owners are in, you know, that have customers that do take more than two hours. I know myself, you know, when I go meet friends for lunch, you know, I do take more than two hours. I know that there are some customers of mine, when they go furniture shopping, they do take more than two hours to pick out pieces of furniture and customize them. However, I also do know that there was a study put out quite a while ago, that an overwhelming majority of people who took the study, that was very well put together, said that they wanted two-hour parking on Center Street. And that when you go to other towns who have revitalized projects like we implemented, they had and have two-hour parking on their main Center Street. You know, downtown screamed for a revitalized downtown. We gave it to them, you know. And so now it is time to start implementing projects and activities like two-hour parking. Our project also shows that there's plenty of parking on side streets. It's important that if we do implement two-hour parking, that we, as store owners, like myself, educate our customers where this parking is. And this morning, at our Merchants Association meeting, excuse me, we talked about putting out public parking signs, which I volunteer to do. It's more than just implementing two-hour parking. It's also an education procedure, which we all need to take part in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Shirley?
Good evening.
She hit on a point. When she talked about they could park on the side street, I'm on the side street. And when you move them off Center Street, then they're gonna come to the side street. Because when you was improving Center Street, we had no parking on the side street. And those people who live down there that have cars, their cars covered our streets. And we had nowhere to park. I've walked from down at the corner of George Street to get to my store. So there needs to be some dialogue and some working on this, because if you're gonna run these people from one place, they're gonna crowd up another one. And then those of us who have the empty cars, our cars and boxes and stuff that we have, and the beauticians bringing in boxes, the clothing store, then we won't have any further parking. It sounds like we just aren't communicating effectively. And maybe we need to do some of that, which seems to be lacking. And not only with that, with a lot of things. We need to begin to communicate this council with the merchants of the city of Goldsboro, not just downtown, but on Slocum Street and some other streets. Because it has become a war between the merchants and the people. And you are really tearing the town apart. We should be more grown up and more intelligent than that, to do that. If you got a problem with somebody, you need to go talk it over with them. And let's not carry grudges against people. Let's be grown up about it. And let's be Christian. We call this the Bible Belt. If God knows that Jesus came, he wouldn't say it was the Bible Belt.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else want to speak?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
My name's Howard Davis, and I live at Wayne'sboro House.
Yes, sir.
And y'all talking about this two-hour parking and parking and all this stuff, the merchants and all. I've got two tickets because something's going on at the Paramount Theater, or somebody's got something on Center Street. You can't park in the back of Wayne'sboro House, 'cause it's crowded, it's full. You can't park nowhere, 'cause it's full. And when you do park, you got the city police running up there giving you a $25 ticket. We got 85 people in that building. Every one of them's handicapped. So if y'all gonna have this two-hour parking thing, y'all need to come across like they do up there in New York, New Jersey. Even Tennessee's got it. I stayed up for 20 years. Come up with some kind of sticker for the people that lives at the Wayne'sboro House that are handicapped and lives there, because you don't get in Wayne'sboro House, not unless you're handicapped in some kind of way. Okay? You're 62 years or older. The merchants worried about where we park, I include myself in this here, 'cause I'm gonna park if I got the towed groceries. I can't walk a half a block or two blocks total. Y'all need to come up with some kind of sticker. Y'all need to come up with some kind of sticker. So where the people that lives on Center Street or lives in town anywhere, if they, if they choose to, to buy that sticker so much as usual.
I agree with this sticker.
Okay.
I mean, I understand Goldsboro's trying to get rich off the poor people. That's all it is. It's a money thing. You got to wear that hundred-dollar suit while I'm wearing this two-dollar shirt. But that's business. But if you're gonna do business, don't kick the old people out to help build this town.
Okay.
Cause if you turn your back on them, you turning your back on most of your kin people.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you so much, sir. I agree with you. Residents that live down here should have some type of parking stickers.
They ain't gonna do it, they ain't gonna do it.
Would anybody else like to speak? Mr. Wright, for some reason, I didn't, just doesn't surprise me. I thought you might come up and speak tonight.
I always enjoy sharing information with my city council. Just as much as I would like to think they enjoy hearing what I like to share with them.
Be carried away in your thoughts, Mr. Wright. Thank you.
Mayor, city councilmen, thank you for this opportunity to present to you some information. Uh, I come to you today to speak about a grant that we've had called Essential Single Family Rehabilitation Loan Pool. That grant came available January first. Uh, as I was given this second sheet last week, and the status of that grant shows that so far only thirteen people have been deemed, uh, eligible for this grant. This is a grant that comes from Housing Finance out of Raleigh. They have twenty million dollars sitting up there waiting for four counties to use this money for this grant. So far, the leading user of this grant has been the Lumbee Indians down in Robeson County. They have what I believe is about sixty-nine people in their portal. And each time you send grants that's completed at the local level into this portal, it stays there for about one day and goes to FEMA and then comes back, and then it comes back approved. It's just a checklist so people don't get paid for their roof by different organizations or get duplicate funds. And I'm very concerned that we would have only been able to process thirteen. Now, I do wanna point out, Mr. Mayor, you at that time says, do you have enough people? Do you have enough people? I want people ready so when we get our hundred and fifty thousand, we can turn it over and we can turn it over. And I want to compliment you for your comments that you made back then. And Mr. Hamm also commented, according to the record, you asked if we had enough people to process these grants. So something is going wrong. In eight months, we've only had thirteen people eligible to receive this grant. And it's something wrong with our system. And I just wanna say, uh, I'm coming with the suggestion. I've taken it upon myself and notified several churches. And myself personally, I've helped seven people last week to apply for this grant. And I've been able to do that on my own time. And I'm not asking for applause or anything, but I do want you to know there are people out there that will, can utilize this grant. And, and I'd just like to bring that to your attention. And the Community Development Block Grant that we are about to get, that deals with almost seven point five million dollars for housing. And we haven't even been able to use a hundred and fifty thousand for housing since January. So we haven't been able to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for housing grants. And here, maybe in a month, we're gonna be getting seven point five million for a new grant to spend for housing. So we need to get on the ball. I plan to work diligently in the community. And I will try to, uh, at least help, uh, two hundred people to apply for grants in between now and the end of this month. Uh, thank you.
Well, I will take a couple of things, Mr. Wright.
First off, you know, and I know, it's not as easy as you made it just sound. And the first thing is getting people qualified, I think is a, it's a huge task. I have figured that out. The, the money, the North Carolina Housing Finance, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that money is there till the whole twenty million gets gone, as you know. And, and I, I don't, I don't think, I don't think the problem is on our end submitting it. It might, I mean, cause some of these folks that you're talking about are waiting for other pots of money, whether it's a buyout or other things, right? Cause this is simply to repair a house. Is all you can do with this money up to forty thousand dollars, right? We agree with that?
Can I correct you on something?
Sure.
I talked with the Housing Finance Supervisor. What he says is, when I asked him specifically about that, I says, well, why is some counties dragging their feet using this money? He says he believes, he says he can't say this officially, but he believes some municipalities is waiting to see how other monies are used. So what they were telling me is some people are waiting to see how the FEMA buyout money was gonna affect their house. But the FEMA buyout notification didn't come to the end of July. This grant was available January first, twenty seventeen. And what the North Carolina Housing Finance says is if a person needs their house fixed, they can apply for this house grant, get their house fixed. And if FEMA wants to come by six months later and buy it and tear it down, or six years later, or three years later, that's up to FEMA. The North Carolina Housing has twenty million dollars that they got to give people money from five thousand to forty thousand to repair their house. Irregardless of whether they signed up for FEMA, whether they signed up for SBA grant, there's no contingencies with this grant. So the fact that they wanted to wait and see, I have asked people myself, I said, would you like this? Do you qualify? Biggest thing is income. Once they've qualified for income, you get a seat at the table. It's simple as that. Now, how long it takes them to be served, once they sitting at the table, that's up to the city. That's up to the management.
And I don't agree, I do agree with you, I don't agree with you. The only thing I'm trying to tell you is we are not a holdup. If we are held up, somebody needs to let me know. I don't believe we, the city staff, are a holdup. That hundred and fifty thousand dollars is there. We don't care how many times we go back and ask for money. We'll go back every week and ask for more money. That, we don't, we don't care. But as you said right here, fifty-eight people, fifty-seven applications, and only thirteen were deemed eligible. So there's a lot of paperwork to get to that point, to figure out who's where. If we're, if we need to do more, all somebody's gonna do is tell us where we need to do more. I feel like we've been very diligent as a city to go after this money and all pots of money. I promise you, I ask all the time. But, but if we're not doing something right, you come back to me one on one.
Well, let me let you know right now, which wasn't done right. Now, that fifty-seven application sounds good on paper. Oh, you did fifty-seven. Well, it doesn't say any time state. How, how long this fifty-seven took? From January one until last week, when I was given this? So number one, this, and then twenty-eight was not, uh, a huge number was not eligible, mainly because of income.
Well, we can't.
I know that. But what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, is when I talk with people individually, I show them the income sheet. I say, here, 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 Mr. Chuck Allen, look at this income sheet. Do you qualify? And right away, if you said, no, I make too much money, I don't give you an application to mail into the city, and then the person to the city, open it up, and then it goes to another person, and they look through all the front, and then they get down to the income, they say, oh, they're not eligible because of income. Let me put it to the side. I, I tell the people upfront, unless your income is the main thing, look at the income first, then fill out the application. So that's one thing, that's one step that's alleviated. And once you get rid of that, that main step, then you dealing with applications that have a lot more, uh, it's, you're using your time wisely because you have things, you have applications that you already have pre-screened. Just by asking them one question, it takes five seconds. Look at the budget and see how many people in your household do you fit within this budget? If yes, let me meet with you. We go over it, I help them fill it out, and they submit it. And it takes about forty-five minutes for me to do that with people.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Mr. Wright, so you're, and I'm gonna let you go, cause I know we gotta go forward. So in your opinion, we're not doing enough?
Well, it's not my, I don't wanna, I don't wanna come across as I'm an opinionated person. All I'm saying is, the Lumbee Tribe has sixty-nine people in the portal. So that could be sixty-nine people that's waiting on fifty thou, forty thousand dollars worth of repairs? Sixty-nine people. So if they can have sixty-nine and seventy, and we even called them and said, can we come down? And we, we was invited down by one person, and the, and the housing manager said, no, you better not. Uh, but we wanted to ride down there and see what they was doing, where they could have seventy, and we only got thirteen. I know, was it something they was drinking in the morning? Was they giving out happy fruit, or what? But, but I, I don't wanna say we slow-dragging, but thirteen in eight months, that's not really pushing a grant. If I can push out seven, and I'm not, I'm a nobody. I don't know a whole lot about this stuff. I'm not hired to do this. But if I can help seven people in one week, surely we can find thirteen in eight months.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that commission.
Let's see, we're still at public comment. Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna close the public comment. What I'd like to tell you is, I just thought you were standing up to speak. I was gonna tell you no. All right, so we're closing the public comment. I'm gonna move back up on the agenda. When we were going down it, we had a resolution expressing appreciation for services rendered by John Morton, and John wasn't here, he was a little bit late. So I wanna back up and do that now, since I've seen him come in. So John, I'm gonna read this real quick, and, and then we'll get you up here, okay? Resolution expression appreciation for services rendered by John Morton as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than thirty years. Whereas John Morton retired on September one, two thousand seventeen, as a fire marshal with the Goldsboro Fire Department, the city of Goldsboro, with more than thirty years of service. John began his career on July eighth, nineteen eighty-seven, as a labor one within the Public Works Department. On January eighth, nineteen ninety, John was promoted to water meter reader with the Public Works Department. On October fifteenth, nineteen ninety, John was promoted to firefighter with the Goldsboro Fire Department. April two, nineteen ninety-seven, John was promoted to fire engineer with the Goldsboro Fire Department. April eighteen, nineteen ninety-eight, John was promoted to fire captain with the Goldsboro Fire Department. January sixteen, two thousand eight, John's position was reclassified to fire inspector with the Goldsboro Fire Department. March thirty-one, two thousand fourteen, John was promoted to fire marshal with the Goldsboro Fire Department, where he served until his retirement. John has proven himself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant, who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro desires on behalf of themselves, employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro of expressing to John Morton their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over these thirty years. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that number one, we express to John our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure with the city of Goldsboro. Two, we offer John our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. And three, we offer this resolution to be incorporated to official minutes of the city of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force and effect after this, the fifth of September, two thousand seventeen. Offer this for adoption.
Just one second.
Any discussion? All favor raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carries seven more. I will tell you one thing, if there's ever been somebody that started at, at the low end and went to the high end, it was John. You can say one thing, don't ever say you can't get promoted. Cause I, it was, I was looking at this, he started as a labor one and ended up, went to water meter reader, did a fireman, and then a fire marshal. So I don't know what kinda education you got over those thirty years, but it must've been pretty good. Come on up, John, come on up, chief.
Chief, you wanna say anything first?
I just wanted to say that, um, losing John's gonna be a big hole for us to feel. Um, I'm happy about his retirement, happy about opportunities that, that he's taken, but at the same time, sad because he's gonna leave a big hole. But he has truly been dedicated at his job. He has, um, made this city a safer seat through his work, and he has helped protect the people. And I will tell you this, I, all, a lot of our individuals do a lot for the community, but John has spent a lot of time with Red Cross, safer kids, um, just other events. It was just recently, he went out and, uh, with the Red Cross, putting up fire alarms in people's houses that didn't have them. He has, um, done outstanding job for us, and we're gonna miss it. But, good work.
John, you wanna say anything?
Well, I just wanted to thank the city of Goldsboro and all of y'all for the support and, uh, the positive words and giving us the equipment that we need to provide fire safety to this, uh, community. And it's been a privilege to work with Chief Whaley and all the team members with this city, working with the Building Department, with Allen Anderson. Uh, you, you might not realize this, but in this city, we have a very unique relationship between the Inspection Department and the Fire Department. And everything works together effectively. We don't work against each other, we're working on the same team. So you're very privileged to have the personnel you have. And I just wanted to thank you. That was all I wanted.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Well, I do wanna take one minute to, to say something personal about John. I've been dealing with John for many years as a fire marshal, and I always thought he was a pain in the butt. But he was always upfront. You know, what, what people don't realize, and the chief has to remind me once in a while, is John always, we might not like what he was telling you, it's stuff like, how do you get a fire truck? And I think, doesn't matter to me, cause it sure does matter to them when there's a fire. Or if you're in a warehouse, and you, this warehouse has been here like twenty years, and John says, well, he has a door right there in that wall, so somebody can get out there to fire. And you're like, well, John, it hasn't been a fire here in twenty years. But there might be one tomorrow, John was telling me. But, but John really did, he, he tried to have common sense in what he did while protecting the fire, and I always appreciate that, and I know a lot of other people out there. And we are gonna miss John. John has a really important job of trying to think through what's gonna happen. So, so that really is important, and we do appreciate what you did for him. All right, man, you gotta smile. You be good. Here, John, you do a whole tour of it. All up.
Hey, John. John.
Hey, John.
John.
I'm gonna deal with you, man.
You have the lunch, you picked, you made. Congratulations. Thanks again, John. All right, so now we got the consent agenda, consent agenda items, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mr., who are you managing?
Mayor, yes, sir. Mayor, your consent agenda were items B through K. Again, your consent agenda items you discussed were items B through K.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Carter Foster?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Robyn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamm?
Yes.
Councilmember Acker?
Yes, the consent agenda is approved. Next, we have items requiring individual action. Center Street parking, who's doing that? You?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers.
Good evening.
We have an item before you today that we've brought before you a couple of times before, so I'm not gonna read the full agenda. I do just want to highlight that we had a parking study in two thousand fifteen, sixteen. They did say that there were areas that had some more demand than there were supply, but there was ample parking within a block and a half of almost any destination. Just two areas during peak periods, um, where there was a concentration of issues. And most of those issues, um, stem from people taking advantage of parking spaces and, and using them for great lengths of, of time. Um, and so the recommendation before you that you've been considering is a time-limited parking, Monday through Friday. Um, based on Councilmember Foster's question or comment at the last meeting, was two hours enough? Would three hours be better? I did take that question back to the Merchants Association to see if they had any strong opinions either way, and they really didn't. So my recommendation would be, our staff's recommendation would be, if we do proceed with some time out, limited parking, to change our earlier recommendation from two hours to three hours.
Any questions, any discussion?
Um, sure. Um, I know when we did the parking study, when parking study came back, it said predominantly where the major traffic issues were, by B and G Grill and on John Street. That's where we have majority of our parking. Also, they stated that there was an influx of, we had, we had additional parking, about six hundred spaces that were available downtown area. They, they strongly was against meters on Center Street at this time. They said in twenty twenty-six, it's when we will have a problem. That's when we need to start working on that. But it would chase people away. So I don't understand where this change is coming from, when, when the study showed differently.
Well, no, the, the study showed the current, we asked them this, we asked them to examine the current conditions. The current conditions said we have ample supply of parking. We have ample demand to meet, um... meet, or ample supply to meet the demands. They did show that during peak periods, there were several areas of downtown that had more use than available spaces. The B and G parking lot was one, around City Hall was part of that space. The one hundred block of North Center Street, the one hundred block of South Center Street, and around the courthouse. And then our, we also asked the consultants to examine seven years out. So we only ever, the study only went ever seven years out. They did say we'd have more demand than supply at that time. They did identify the location would be the three hundred and four hundred block of South Center Street. They did recommend at this time to, ways to educate the public on the use of avail, and availability of parking, such as what Kathy had suggested. And we plan to do that with the wayfinding signage system. That will be directing people to public parking spaces. So that will help people understand other options that are available to them for longer periods of time if the, if time limited parking is instituted, that they will have other options. They also recommended not being heavy-handed in enforcing strictly time, limited parking or paid parking because we're trying to create an atmosphere to support the local businesses and have people experience downtown in a positive way. But so this seemed to be a really good alternative that hit both the education and slight, light enforcement. It's really intended, I think, at this point, just to, to direct those that are really taking advantage of these spaces that have the ability to move to a side street or a public parking space that's nearby, but instead are choosing that convenience for themselves and parking their days at a time. We've tracked cars that have been sitting in the same space for a week on the one hundred block of South Center Street. This isn't intended to be heavy-handed, I don't think anybody's planning on being out there every fifteen minutes checking cars. The purpose is for those repeat offenders that are sitting out there days at a time or full-time, you know, that's the purpose of this, is to change habits right now. I don't think, I think the study reinforced that, I think we know that we're not at a point where the, the supply is so low to meet their demand. I mean, we're, but we're at that breaking point. And we really think this is a good way to help the merchants be able to turn over spaces to encourage customers to, and their convenience to use the businesses that we have. So it seems like a soft approach that will lead us, you know, get us ahead of the curve, just change those that are really abusing the public parking at this time. And, you know, in the future, we'll be examining, we, now we have that traffic and parking analysis study, we have all the data we need to track if there's changes in those numbers moving forward, and then we'll come back to you at those times if we feel like there's.
Ms. Metz, is there gonna be any time in the near future that we're gonna look at what Duke University does with their metered parking? Instead of it being a machine that you're putting coins in, but you come and you, like you have a stake where the number is, where you're parked at, and you go and push that number into the machine, and it tells you how long you've been parked at that particular spot, and you put your card in, you pay, is that the kind of parking, meter parking we're gonna look at eventually?
Eventually, I mean, the, the consultants touched on that as one solution to the problem if we get to that point where we, we really, really have to get more forceful in, in managing our parking supply. But they did not, they said that we weren't there yet, we probably wouldn't even be there for another seven years unless a lot of growth that we're not expecting occurs. We, we did model into the seven-year forecast some assumed growth based on projects that we know are gonna happen and then some assumptions. And if there's something drastic changes to that formula, that time might come earlier, but at this time, we wouldn't be recommending anything like that for another seven years.
Alan, my question is, we already have a shortage of policemen doing the work that they're already doing. And if, say this does pass, how are they gonna do this on top of the work that they're already doing? And then you're saying that, well, it's not gonna be seriously enforced. If it's not gonna be seriously enforced like that, then why are we doing it from the, from the beginning? It's just a waste of time. So if we don't have our, our numbers where they need to be to do community policing, I don't feel like we have our numbers where it need to be for, for pool policemen off to be doing tickets for downtown, so.
I think we would agree with you and I, you know, I'm not into the, how we enforce it, but in conversations that we've had with the city manager and other staff, I think the recommendation of the city manager was to use code enforcement, that was not a good use of police officers. So the code enforcement personnel that we have on staff right now would incur that, they're downtown a lot already, you know, picking up litter and working with the different folks to make sure that downtown is kept clean. So I think if the city manager has any more answers to provide to you at this time, encourage him to do so, but that's my understanding is we're not gonna use the police department.
Well, I mean, then I still will turn around and ask the question with code enforcement because I get complaints all the time about areas not being cut, different things, and I've called the city manager all the time. So how they're gonna, how are they gonna have time to turn around and enforce this as well? I just feel like we're understaffed, we're not ready for this right now. It looks good on, on paper to some degree, and maybe it would free up some spaces for some of the merchants. I, I don't disagree with that. I understand that they have businesses and they would like to have, it's nice to be able to pull right up to a parking spot, but when I go to the mall, sometimes I have to park all the way at the end. If it's Christmas, I gotta park wherever I can, but if I'm, if I really want something out of that store, I'm gonna go get it. And I think that's the most important thing right now. I, I, I think that, you know, if somebody calls me and say, I want something out of your store downtown, and you're not willing to park down the street the walk, then I guess you really don't want it. So I just think that it's gonna hurt the businesses such as the bar, we have two barber shops downtown that are very successful. I mean, very successful. And I, I'm be honest, I ain't, I haven't been in a barber shop in years unless I have an appointment, which they take appointments now, that I can get in and get out with a haircut within two hours. And I, and I could be the first person there. It's just, you know, sometimes we, you go just, just to be able to talk, you know what I mean? I can go there and talk to Mr. Percy, I just wanna talk. Or, or, or Lobo at his shop, you know, and, and, and during the conversation, you're getting a haircut, so it's taking a lot longer. And then you sit around for a while and you forget and you go outside and you have a ticket, and I was only getting a haircut. You know, and then the fines on top of that, I mean, if you don't pay within a certain amount of time, it's a fifty-dollar fine, it's fifty dollars. Then if you don't pay within that certain amount of time, it's a hundred dollars. I mean, that's a lot of money and people don't have that kind of money. You know, especially if you're gonna say, you, you ticket somebody to the Wayne's Borough house, then their car gets, gets towed. How are they gonna afford this on a fixed income? I mean, you just can't. You can't, not on a fixed income. I mean, you're talking seven hundred dollars a month. I can't afford a hundred dollar ticket. So for some people, it might be fine, but for those, it's, 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 I just can't right now at this moment agree with that, and I don't see how anybody on this council can. I can't tell anybody else what to do, but I just knows what makes sense right now at this time.
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna debate or provide any information, I just didn't want to say Percy, because he has been one of my favorite longtime businesses downtown. He was a big supporter of the Streetgate Project and, so, and based on your comments at the other meeting, that's why we were recommending.
And I apologize if, I didn't mean to come at you if I was, you know, I'm just making statements and I apologize.
I just wanted to say we were, we were taking your point and his into consideration and we changed our recommendation.
Yes.
Any more to his comments, questions, discussion?
Well, I just appreciate the merchants with the wayfinding signs, I think that's a, that's a good thing. Thank you for that.
Well, the recommendation in front of you is to adopt a time limited parking strategy for Center Street from Ash Street to Chestnut Street, Monday through Friday, eight to five. So what would y'all like to do?
I'd make a motion that we don't approve it at this time.
I second that motion.
All right, is, any discussion of that? All in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Motion, well, anybody opposed? The motion carries, I think, seven to nothing.
Yeah.
All right, so we're not gonna adopt parking downtown right now. All right, we're gonna move to item CU seventeen dash sixteen.
CU seventeen sixteen, Ishmael Cordell. Is located on northwest corner of South Sloten Street and Harold Street. The request is to extend his business hours. When originally approved, the business, the council approved the business hours from six AM to nine PM. Mr. Cordell is requesting that these business bits, hours be extended to six AM to eleven PM. At a public hearing held on August twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, one person appeared to speak in favor of the request, Councilman Foster expressed his opposition. The planning commissioner at that meeting held on August twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, recommended approval of the request. The recommendation would be by motion, accept the recommendation of the planning commissioner and adopt an order approving the amendment of the conditional use permit to allow an extension of the hours of operation for the convenience store to eleven PM.
Any questions of Mr. Rupp?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment about this.
Comment? Go ahead.
Okay. I can understand Mr. Sam's position in wanting to stay open until eleven o'clock. I don't support it and I, and I'll tell everybody why. In two thousand sixteen, Mr. Sam was in a different store. At that time, there were several violations. Talked about those violations for a while. And with the findings of everything, and at the end of the day, he did move into another store. With that, he was given the hours of, what, six to nine or seven to nine? Because of, because of the violations and everything that happened. I understand people do change. I'm a living product of that. You know, just say, say, eight years ago, I was in prison. I was in prison because of something that I did. Now, with what I did, I had to take, suffer the consequences, I had to do it, do, do my time. Now, coming out of prison, I graduated from college, two degrees, three point seven GPA, got into law school in two thousand twelve. Now, with all that being said, I still cannot to this day protect my home with a gun because of what I did before. When you do certain things, there are certain things that get placed because of the, because of what you did in your past. And you, you don't wanna hold that against the person, but at, at the end of the day, Mr. Sam did some things in his past that aren't showing that he needs to stay open until eleven o'clock. So until, you know, just until any time, I mean, I just don't feel like it's, it's appropriate for that, for that area to be open until eleven o'clock. If you need something before then, you can get it before. I, I live close to the food line, it closes at ten. I gotta be there by ten to get what I need. That's just bottom line.
I'd like to make a comment.
Uh-uh, y'all, you can't talk from the audience, okay? Please, don't talk.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I'd like to make a comment. I have been following Mr. Sam several, the whole time with Lonnie. Lonnie tells me what's going on and I've listened to some other people, and I'm just suggesting a compromise and we go to ten o'clock and then if it stays as good as it is, then we'll go to eleven at another time. I'm just saying, we compromise at ten o'clock.
Okay, hold, hold that thought, because Mr. Foster wasn't quite finished.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, even if you go to the Piggly Wiggly, it closes at nine. And if everybody in that neighborhood can get where they gotta get and, and out by nine, why can't we do it down at that end of time? It, it is in a residential area, you have houses next to the store, just like Piggly Wiggly, versus a food line or, or different other stores that are in a commercial building, which most of those still even close by ten. Like I said, I do understand that there might be items that you might need, but if the store closes at nine, then you know you have to be there by nine to get those items that you need, or you have to go to another store.
I'd like to make a motion. I'm sorry.
Mr. Roble, I think you made a motion, was that a motion?
You didn't make a motion, did you, Bill?
No, no, I didn't make a motion.
I was just gonna make a motion that we compromise at, at ten o'clock.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right. You got a second?
No, I said, we both have a second.
Is there any discussion to Mr. Roble's motion of ten o'clock? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same. Motion carries five to, that Mr. Sam can be open till ten o'clock. All right, with that, I, I do wanna make one comment, one thing, I do wanna say, I will say kind of to what you, I have been to Mr. Sam's store probably three or four times myself since he moved, and he has done a much better job, his, his, what he's got in the store, I think, are what people need. I do ask Mr. Sam that you don't let up, because I think those people are counting on you and we're counting on you to continue not to have vauchering, to have a good store, to have trash-free store, and, and we just ask, and as Mr. Roble said, maybe we can get to eleven o'clock if we can keep things going like we are, but, but I just wanna encourage you, because I do think you've done a good job with it. Okay? All right, I'm sorry. So now we got the deletion of the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Mr. Rupp?
Item in, deletion of extraterritorial jurisdiction property access from Bryan Boulevard. The subject property is located west of US one seventeen south and includes a total of seven to eight lots containing eight hundred and four, five point eight one acres. The city is unable to enforce its ordinances relative to nuisances within this extraterritorial jurisdiction and maintain, maintains no police power within that area. At the public hearing held on August twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, one person appeared to express her concerns about the enforcement ordinances and laws pertaining to a portion of the property which is occupied by Busco Beach. The planning commissioner at that meeting held on August twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, recommended approval of the deletion of the subject properties from the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. The recommendation would be by motion, accept the recommendation of the planning commissioner and adopt an order to delete the property's access from Bryan Boulevard from the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Any questions of Mr. Rupp? If not, you have a recommendation for you?
Make a motion that we delete the extraterritorial jurisdiction from the property off Bryan Boulevard.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same. I think the motion carries five to two. With that, we'll go to county manager's report.
Mayor and council, the only item I have is to remind the community about peak week, there are a number of activities throughout the week, but the main event is September ninth, really starting at ten AM downtown, running until about five or six o'clock Saturday afternoon, all along Center Street from Ash to Spruce, from a car show to bands to Drummers' World, to wing events, to a lot of activities and vendors, and we just encourage the community to come out September ninth on Saturday from somehow around ten o'clock till five o'clock downtown.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Attorney?
Your report, sir.
All right, we'll move to mayor and councilmen reports. I do have a proclamation for Constitution Week that I'm gonna read real quick. Whereas September seventeen, two thousand seventeen marks the two hundred twenty-ninth anniversary of draft on the Constitution of the United States, of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, as well as the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate on this occasion. Public law of nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. And whereas the David Williams chapter of the Dollars of the American Revolution do hereby acknowledge and commemorate this official recognition being given to this magnificent document on its anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will be reserved during Constitution Week. Therefore, I check out the mayor of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, to hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. In Goldsboro, we're counting on our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by visually protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the scouring of our liberties and remember that those lost rights may never be regained. So I've got that proclamation, and then we'll move to the council room comments. Mr. Williams?
Started, used to go with me last time.
Never mind, Mr. Williams, Mr. A. Com. Mr. Ham?
No comment.
Mr. Foster?
No comment.
Mr. Stevens?
I'd just like to say, thanks to everyone that was supporting and showing love to people in Texas and showing their true heart to be an American. It's a funny thing everybody says to be an American, specifically going through the situations that Texas has gone through and we have gone through in the past, and another storm is barreling down on us. So I'd just like to say thank you to the ones who have done that and reached out and, you know, keep doing it, sticking together and striving together, so that's all I'd say.
Thank you. Mr. Foster's had a change of heart.
Oh, yes, I just wanna send my condolences to the Gerald family. It was a wonderful thing to celebrate Ms. Virginia Gerald's hundredth birthday, to find out she passed not too long after that, but I'd like to send my condolences out to them. And I'd also like to send my condolences out to Ms. Kay, finance director here. Her husband passed as well, and, you know, I know this is rough on her, so that's it.
Okay, Ms. Broadway?
I just have two things, I'd just like to express condolences to the family of Mike Farfor. He was kind of a duty character that we've had around here for many years, and he died, he was ninety-one. And the second thing I have is be sure we're prepared for this storm that's coming. I wasn't prepared for Matthew, and I promise you, I'm going to have gas in my car and some things, food in the house, so who knows where it's going, but let's protect ourselves. That's all I have, sir.
Mr. Williams?
I want to piggyback off what Councilman Foster said, my condolences to Ms. Gerald and also to Kay for the loss of her family member. And I also want to thank Mr. Wright, you know, he's always informative, and I just want to let the citizens know that we do care about you here at the city, and we do want, you know, you to get all that you deserve as far as benefits that's out there. So concerning the disaster recovery, you can always call Community Relations and basically find out what's going on as far as if you're eligible or not, okay? So make sure you follow through, because it expires October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Thank you.
All right, well, just I want to piggyback mainly on what everybody else has said on Ms. Gerald, several has got to get her last hundredth birthday, it was a really great event that the, I think the Police Department and Fire Department helped her with, and her family. It was really great that we got to do that, and she got to live to be that, that's a great thing. And all, everybody has said on Kay and her loss, we're all very sorry. Kay's a huge part of our family here, and we love her, and she's a strong woman, so she'll pull through. I do want to say, you know, we've all been through Houston in a smaller scale, I guess I should say, but all of us should keep them in our thoughts and prayers, because we still have people here today suffering, and they're in for a long, long ride, as we know, you know, so always want to keep them in our thoughts, anything you can do to help them is good. Following up on the manager, I do want to say that Beat Week is coming up, it starts, I think, today, and so if you can, come downtown and enjoy Beat Week and be a part of it, there's a lot of good activities coming up, especially this weekend. And lastly, following up on Councilmember Williams and Mr. Wright, I'm not a hundred percent sure on the disaster recovery, where we are, if we're doing, I thought and think that we're doing everything we can, but I could be wrong. If there's any citizen out there that's not getting service, please let us know. As Councilmember Williams, you can call Community Relations, you can call me, I don't care who you call, but we want to be sure that we get our share of this money. That is our job, that is our goal, is that we help these citizens in need. So if there's anybody who feels like they're not getting help in the city, please let us know. And with that, we thank everybody for coming, and we stand adjourned.